Good afternoon, the Board of Trustees' regular meeting is now called to order at four thirty-four P M. We welcome members of the public. We had one member of the public here. And I'm, uh, item, uh, instructions on making public comment are noted, uh, in item one of the agenda, and we will ask each item whether or not there is public comment. Catherine, will you please do roll call?
Uh, yes, sir, trustee Olson.
Thank you.
Trustee Olson.
You're not, you're not, um, amplified.
Here, sorry. Trustee Kishinav.
Here, we all heard you.
Uh, student trustee Alejandro Martinez.
Here.
Uh, trustee Baker.
Here.
And we have absent trustee Rios, trustee Iverson, and trustee Deluna, trustee Dodd.
Yes, and I, I know trustee Luna is not going to be joining us, but I assume Rios and Iverson will be here. Uh, Deluna is excused, um, being sick today.
Okay, thank you.
Would our student trustee please lead the pledge of allegiance? Sure. I should have told you before. Pledge of allegiance to the Black, Native American, South American. As we gather here today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded traditional ancestral and contemporary homelands of the Miwok, Patwin, who are composed of three federally recognized tribes, the Kachil Dehe Band of Winton Indians of the Kaluza Indian Community, the Kletzel Dehe Band of Winton Indians, and the Yocha Dehe Winton Nation, and Wapo, including the Mishewa Wapo, also known as the Onastis people. As part of the Napa Valley College's mission of preparing students for evolving roles in a diverse, dynamic, and interdependent world, and in accordance with the college's values of honesty, integrity, inclusivity, and respect for others, we make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetuated against indigenous peoples, the land, and water. Maybe hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice with the Miwok, Patwin, and Wapo peoples. Are there any changes to the agenda? I like having you over here, that's nice. Um, if none, uh, trustee Kishinav, trustee Baker, student trustee, nada. Then we'll adopt the agenda by consensus, and the board at this time will devote up to fifteen minutes to hear comments regarding closed session items, and comments will be limited to three minutes during that time. Catherine, are you aware of any public comment on closed session items?
No, I have no public comment.
Okay, and I am not aware of any either, and not seeing anybody in the crowd today that is raising their hand. At this time, the Board of Trustees will move into closed session covering Public Employee Discipline, Dismissal Release Conference with Labor Negotiator, um, four point two, and then another conference with Labor Negotiators four point three, uh, and also Public Employee Performance Evaluation. The board will return at five thirty P M. and show that the record is that trustee Rios is here. You can begin the meeting. Let's see here. Okay, the board is returning back from closed session at five thirty-five P M. There is nothing to report from closed session, and we'll move on to item six point one, recognition of newly tenured faculty. Uh, Dr. Mora?
Thank you. Um, Catherine, would we be able to pull up that item?
A factor that's voted on, uh, but it's, it's a way to weigh the contribution to all of these agencies. To rest, to dictate the, the portion of that increase that they'll receive.
And then just to be clear too, on terms of the, the, the faculty reopen on that piece, it was based on property tax increase, not the actual increase in property tax revenues that the college would, would obtain.
Yes, just to be clear, your, your first sentence is absolutely correct. That the increase in the base rate that the, that the county received is what's linked to the CBA for faculty.
Right.
Right. The 5.16% is the increase in how much money we received. So we received.
From the previous year.
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
And I just wanted to point out that the faculty CBA prompts reopen her at post 7.49%. And that conversation has begun, but I, I just want to stress here that there is, there is nothing reflected in this budget that anticipates what that reopen her might look like, but what terms and conditions may come out of that reopen her. Permanent, permanent classified salary increases are three and a half percent per the CBA. Administrator confidential salary increases are at three and a half percent as a follow along. We have increases in purse contribution at just slightly over a percent and a half. Stirs is flat at 19.10%. Included in the budget are what we call step and column adjustments based on seniority and, and promotion. And out of cat, uh, class pay is also included. Next slide, please. Our changes in costs in, uh, in 2324. Our SERP two, uh, started on July 1st, um, and we had 18 participants. Um, our anti- anticipated annual SERP savings is, is about $450,000 net. Um, net of our costs for the annuity over five years with minimal rehires. Changes in section offerings, again, this is a reflection of our variable costs, um, in, in, um, in, in, in teaching, you can see from 20, uh, from 2020 to 2021, our sections were around 1179 for fall and spring semesters. They dropped off obviously through the pandemic and had begun to bounce back in 2324 at 1050 sections and those are projected. Our costs associated with part-time faculty salaries, um, in 2223 are about $3.9 million. If we are in fact going to be, our, our initial projection was for flat enrollments. Our projection would be essentially the same dollars. Adding 8% per the CBA for faculty salaries to, to the tune of $4.3 million in, in part-time salaries. Next slide, please. Our methodology, our revenues are, as I would mention, based on the county increase of 8.16% uh, over the 2324, uh, rate, uh, resulting in a 5.17% increase in property tax revenue to the district. Changes in state revenues are reflected for the chancellor's office advanced apportionment schedule. Uh, local revenues are based upon the average of actual receipts over the past two years. And other financing sources are, are equal to anticipated revenues for the upcoming year. Generally speaking, we have projected our costs. Generally speaking, at a two-year average plus, um, plus a, uh, an inflation increase of around 3%. Our expenditures, uh, we talked about salaries, benefits are driven by our payroll numbers. Operating expenses have been reviewed and adjusted based on spend rates and recent experience. Again, about two years of activity plus, uh, cost of, uh, an inflation rate. Requests for budget augmentation are under review and we earmarked an amount for budget augmentation. OPEB increases. Other post-employment benefits include medical costs for retirees in addition to SERP one and SERP two annuity costs. So you'll see a slight bump in the, in, in the cost for OPEB. Okay, OPEB, by the way, are included when we, when we look to the percentage of our budget that we devote to salaries and benefits. Next slide, please. The challenges the institution, the district has faced with respect to staffing appropriately relative to our enrollments was brought to light by the thick mats study and, and studies provided by our own faculty and staff a few years ago. What we attempted to do is provide you a comparison between what that staffing was prior to the efforts to reduce staff. So if, when you look at August 21, that was prior to the, any efforts to reduce staff. And August 23, which is last month. So what this tells you is it's a comparison of staffing levels prior to SERP one, eight 21, and after SERP two, eight 23. Far left column, excuse me, the numeric column. You'll notice this is a total, uh, you'll see that the headcount in August of 21 was 310. Or for an F, a full-time equivalent of 300. If you drop down just below that and the to- total for 23, you'll notice that we dropped in, in headcount at, from, uh, 310 and 21 to 202, excuse me, 262 in, in 23. This is largely a measure of two things, the SERP and a very careful review of open decisions when people have left for any reason. If you move one, uh, column, numeric column to the left under fund 11, this is the fund that gets the most attention. You'll see that, um, in 21, we had, um, a, a headcount of 254. And then, uh, down below in 23, a headcount of 205. Now, just for a point of clarity, why, why would we measure August? Why would we not measure July? Because August is when all of our faculty contracts are in place. July is just typically classified, uh, contracts. So that's why you're, we're seeing August comparison to August comparison. So it's showing you essentially what our staff, what our staffing is done over the course of essentially two years and the work. That has been put in place to, to evaluate and, uh, and look at resizing our staffing complement to meet our student body size. Next slide, please. Here are six strategic goals. I think, uh, most of you have seen these, uh, several times. What we've done is, as the requests for budgets or budget priorities, we, we align with these particular goals. Uh, and we'll note those as we look at, um, the commitments we've made in our budget. Thank you. Our priorities, we developed a budget memorandum a few years ago to put a finer point at what we're trying to accomplish institutionally, uh, in, in this budget cycle. And here are the priorities we, we attempted to accomplish. First, student equity support and success. Be sure that we're devoting resources and have resources to, uh, address that, that very important initiative. Those are funds primarily from state equity funds. Our second priority is the 50% law. If you've been around more than a few weeks, you know that the 50% law has been, uh, uh, a top agenda item certainly for Dr. Powell and others. Um, so we're working to, um, uh, make progress there. Uh, in 2020, 2021, our 50% law, it was at 41.97%. Last year at 42 and this year, uh, at close, pre-close at 45.22%. We're showing progress here, but I, I don't see us getting there next week. Uh, and perhaps not for another year or, or, or more, but we are making progress there. Excuse me. I do want to emphasize that that when, when I reflect on 22, 23 numbers, they're at a pre-close, pre-close meaning they haven't been audited yet. And as I'll reflect on a little later, as I looked at numbers last night, even the pre-close was, was a little different than I reported in a good way, but a little different because they're pre-close and they're, and they're still going through some, some, uh, work in terms of adjustments. Employee salaries and benefits we spoke about is another priority, investments in technology. We have reflected on extensively and you'll see an, an increase in our, in our commitment to technology, both in managed services and in hardware, uh, as, as a priority. Student outreach and marketing, efforts to reengage students in, back to the institution, certainly post-pandemic are, uh, uh, are considered a priority. And then our fund balance or reserves, what that looks like, uh, has been a priority. So I didn't change this number. It's gone down a little bit and I'll explain that in just a moment. So that's, I didn't catch that correction. Next slide, please. Here's a 2324 budget, the amounts and, and the budget priorities. Remember student equity, support and success was the number one priority. Last year we devoted, or, or we had the ability to devote 2.192 million dollars to that initiative. I'll share with you that the chancellor's office has not released those numbers yet. Um, uh, and we anticipate they'll be released, they said sometime in September. I don't, I don't anticipate they'll go down. There remains a high priority at, at the state level. But well, those need to be confirmed, uh, as soon as we receive those dollars. Investments in technology and instructional equipment in fund 11, uh, an incremental increase of $750,000 primarily toward managed services for IT. Um, the, the contract is about 1.1 million dollars. But the incremental increase to last year's budget is 750. So I want to be really clear about that. In fund 12, we've made commitments, um, uh, at $350,000. We've made a $450,000 commitment. Uh, the ASNBC students have been generous in their support and commitment to improving the wifi service on campus to the tune of $450,000. So Giovanni, please share that, uh, that thanks to, uh, your colleagues, uh, on the student body. $650,000 up to a million dollars in instructional equipment and out of state funds, and I put an asterisk there. The challenge we, we are looking at is the state, uh, uh, state budget reductions have caused, uh, some clawbacks and some funds in some particular areas, particularly in scheduled maintenance, instructional equipment. So what they have done is, is said, um, we need to clawback, but we will allow you to use other funds in combination and make those decisions at the district level. So instructional equipment, scheduled maintenance, COVID relief and, and, and student engagement funds can be together in a pool and we make a determination about how we spend that. This number doesn't reflect that plan. So I, I put an asterisk at the bottom and it's subject to, uh, California Community College funding information and NBC plan development about how we'll use those ones. Student outreach and marketing is a part of the pooled funds as well. Um, uh, and we are making some, some good inroads there, but again, that's subject to some, uh, continued planning. Unfunded liabilities, um, we actually did fund a little bit, but it's close to zero. So I put zero in there. Increase in fund balance, our fund balance is about 364, 934. It's down from Tuesday when we, we're around 503. But I'll explain that in a little, in a, in a moment, and I think there's a little bit of good news there too. Next slide, please. What's also included in our budget or operational recommendations? We have engaged a Lucian who is our enterprise software specialists and providers to support some improvements and, and taking down barriers in some particular areas in, in our enterprise software that, that are creating, have created historically problems to student access, to processing of data, to budgets, to HR, et cetera. So for advisory services for HR, finance and IT out of fund 11 is $120,000 in this budget. And out of, um, fund 12, our financial agent AR, they're able to, um, reap funds from federal and state sources to support, um, student aid and, and, uh, admissions and records. IT managed services is, is there. I, I, I repeat myself there. There's a $750,000 incremental increase to 2223 for a 1.1 million dollar contract. Compensation starting in anticipation of, of, um, discussions on CBAs is a $25,000. Our educational master plan is in the, in the budget at $100,000 out of fund 11 and $48,200 out of HSI funds. We have an environmental consultant included in the, in the budget. You may recall this was reflected in last year's budget, but they didn't begin the work until, uh, recently. So that $100,000 sits in this year's budget. The environmental consultant. It is primarily district. However, some of the mitigation is going to be supported by, um, by the Martin Group. And, and I'll spend a little time of that in my report. We have an interim closure plan there. We should anticipate some additional costs related to any final closure on that site, uh, to come. Our interim closure, uh, was really an effort to make sure the site was ready and, and safe when students began to occupy our residential side, which is adjacent to that property. Next slide, please. Notes to fund 11, the position control remains a high priority. Uh, we do not have our, all of our, um, uh, software, uh, in place or up to speed. We continue to use, um, uh, the president's cabinet as the clearinghouse for replacement of positions. Physicians author, we, that, those are considered on a case-by-case basis. And physicians authorized for recruitment will be initially posted internally, uh, for, uh, uh, the college receiving the right to reassign existing staff, et cetera. Uh, the president's cabinet will strive to achieve a no net change to the operating budget as part of these considerations. What that means is, uh, Dr. Powell has insisted that we look at every available possible appropriate way to fund positions. Uh, they don't all, uh, have to automatically come out of fund 11. So, uh, that's an exercise that, uh, that we've begun in earnest, looking, uh, and continue to look at. Um, should we need and when we need to replace positions, what's the appropriate funding source for those? Note number two, technology, technology investments through managed services we've discussed. Increase in the fund balance is a projection, is a projection dependent on the ending balance for fiscal year 2223. And, and real, and realized revenues and expenditures for 2324. So what, what I'm seeing as of last night is, is the 2223 budget is doing a little bit better. So the ending balance will be a little bit better and that will reflect positively on the, um, fund balance moving forward. Um, number five, we, we speak to, um, our enterprise software, uh, and our, our need to continue to fund, uh, the ability to be more efficient with it. And then number five is position control, essentially repeating what I said in number one, it's a thick map. There's, uh, uh, recommendation that we improve control systems and reporting and we're moving in that direction. Next slide, please. Notes to fund 12, fund 12, if you recall, is the restricted fund. Um, for the college, we have several funds. The ones you will hear about the most are fund 11, the unrestricted general fund and fund 12, the restricted fund. Restricted fund is where most all categorical funds go to and grant funds go to, what we call special, special program funds. All restricted funds have a restriction from the donor or the, the provider of funds to, to meet the needs of a particular group, to meet, uh, particular outcomes or are time sensitive. So at this day, when, when I show you the fund 12, it looks a little odd because it hasn't been completely closed out on 2223 yet. There's plenty of funds there, but they haven't been all reconciled yet. The, the revenue projections in fund 12 that you'll see do not include any changes from the state yet because those haven't been, um, haven't been published yet. And college finance staff continue to review the appropriate and allowable allocation of expenses to fund 12 programs. Changes due to this continued review of accounts is ongoing and will be reflected in closing financial statements. I'll share with you now that, that many of you know who, uh, Mr. Doug Roberts is. Uh, Doug is, uh, somewhere in Portugal today. And, but he's agreed to come back and help us with, uh, taking another hard look at our 50% law. And, uh, and gathering some information in anticipation of a report. Um, uh, to see where we can, what we can do to improve on our 50% by use, appropriately utilizing fund 12, uh, resources.
Jim, for, speaking of fund 12, I was looking at, um, pre-close numbers, um, for 2223. I'm assuming this is what you were kind of alluding to, that this number that's being presented isn't going to necessarily look the same maybe a year from now, but in seeing, I think, a seven point, a 7.1 million dollar jump of what was, or for, in terms of state revenues, um, was initially projected last year at 7.5 and then ultimately was close to 17 million. What, what, what was that, um, that delta?
The, the delta is that it hasn't been closed out for 2223 yet. So it's not even to next year yet. It hasn't been closed out in fund 12. We had a staff member who was devoted to fund 12 who, who left on June 30th. So, so the best information I have today for fund 12 is what we printed, but it will change. Um, so, so, uh, the takeaways from fund 12 from my perspective, others can weigh in, uh, is that we're underspending in several areas. So we have pretty significant balances.
Yeah, and that's why I saw that too in terms of the, the ending fund balance as well. Was in, over nine.
Yes. It also includes HSI funds and, and in addition to all of our categoricals. So while we're doing well in some, you know, we're underspending in others and I, I'm not, I'm not being specific to anything, but the HSI funds are fairly significant funding sources, uh, as are all these categoricals. Um, my recommendation is that we spend more time with those program areas to develop, uh, budgets that communicate in, uh, across the campus about how we use all of those, how we consider the use of all those funds to meet, um, college objectives. Um, historically, I think it's been a little bit siloed. And, and so we've missed some opportunities. So, um, I'd like to see us spend more of that as trustee Baker indicated on Tuesday. Um, uh, that we don't realize these funds until we spend them, unlike fund 11. So unspent funds are technically a liability because you run the risk of having to return them if you don't use them. We never want to be in that position, obviously, but it's reflected, uh, a, a little differently. It's much like you giving money to, to a charity and they don't use it. They have an obligation to return it to you. Uh, if they don't use it for the purposes for which it was intended.
And so, thank you.
Next slide, please. Notes to other funds. This is just a, a listing of all the funds that, that you will, um, you will consider in, in your, uh, budget proposal, uh, today. I, I'm not going to go over through this list, but we will go through the numbers, uh, uh, fairly quickly as we move through the, the second portion of this, uh, presentation. I just wanted to acknowledge, um, this, the many folks who contributed to putting this together, including our, our business and finance staff, including the, the budget and planning committee. Uh, and particularly to, um, Wendy Nuko, Doug Roberts, David Prince, Emelda Vasco, Solange, uh, Kada for, for putting this together. So a big thanks to them. Next slide. Let's move on to the second, um, thank you. You thought you were done, didn't you? This is the formal, uh, recommendation to the president superintendent, uh, regarding the budget for 2324. Um, much of this, uh, uh, this is an outline of the budget. The 2324 final budget, uh, table of contents. Uh, a bit of a repeat of the narrative you just seeing. Next slide, please. Next page. Our budget committee, uh, membership. This is, um, the memo to Dr. Powell, um, uh, with the recommendation from the budget committee regarding uh, this year's budget with, uh, some narrative about what changes that we just talked about in, in the narrative related to this year's budget. An overview of the document, again, staff recognition. Uh, I, I just want to just scroll up a little bit here. One of the ACCJ, one of our creditors, uh, clear focus i- is that we combine, that we integrate carefully our planning and our budget so that our budget is reflective of the institution's plans. So, um, this is an effort to at least describe our intent to do that. And we've made some progress, though we still have uh, some, some work to be done here. Scroll down, please. These are 18 to 23 institutional strategic plan. Um, this is essentially what we outlined in the, uh, in the narrative that we started with. Our, uh, this is the memorandum, um. I'm sorry, these are the budget development values and assumptions that were revised in March of 22 and reviewed by the budget committee, uh, last year. Uh, and it essentially provides, uh, a narrative about what the priorities are. Integration with planning, I just mentioned fiscal stability. Um, how we address personnel issues and the value of personnel here at, at the district. Let's scroll down here. Uh, facility and technology maintenance and capital improvements. And then, uh, a, a request, a requirement that we, we, uh, meet our legal mandates and our contractual requirements. Then we talk about, uh, grants, donations and categorical fund, how we'll use those essentially for the intended purpose for which they were given. Um, and a focus on operational efficiency as well as, has become, um, uh, a theme that, that we are paying attention to. I think also important here, last year was a consideration by the budget committee and, and reviewed by the board of trustees that a goal of spending 87.5% of expenditures on salary and benefits was inspired by the amount spent by other community colleges. According to the California Legislative Analyst Office, this is, uh, at least a year ago. The average amount the community college districts in California spent on salary and benefits is around 85%. Uh, this amount is listed in multiple years, including 21 and 22. A study of the top 30 salary districts in California, based on actual results from 18 to 19 academic year, determined that the median spent on salary and benefits from more competitive compensation districts was 87.5%. While the relative amounts of 85% and 87.5% should be monitored over the long term, this goal is, is not intended to be micromanaged on a year-to-year basis or updated during periods of extreme financial stress, since it's during a recession or pandemic. I think there was, um, a recognition that we wanted to provide, provide some, some guidance for how, uh, with the kind of commitment, uh, that the budget would make each year to faculty compensation, excuse me, employee compensation. Our final budget, this is, these are the numbers. Just to orient you to these schedules, uh, if you're really interested in doing some trend analysis, we provided you audited 2021 and audited 2122 numbers. The, the references, the board, uh, the board of, uh, adjusted, excuse me, the board approved adjusted budget for 2223 are what we most recently, recently worked with as, as a comparison. The pre-close number is at 831. When I looked at last night's numbers, they are actually better than this, both on the revenue side and on the expense side. So I will just leave this, um, we're going to leave it as presented. Uh, uh, but the pre-close numbers, uh, I think, um, I think we'll be pleased with. Uh, and the final budget is a variance. So what we've done in the next column to the right or the second column from, uh, of the, from the right is what's the difference between what our pre-close number is and what our final budget is. So the far right column is the final budget as, as recommended. Um, you'll see, uh, the variance in federal income was about $3,300. You'll see state income, income dropped by $507,000. And that's a bit of the clawback that we're seeing. Let me also just point out, could you scroll down to the footnotes here, Catherine? In each of these schedules, each of these funds, we provided how it came to the revenue and the reason for the expense in each of these. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on each line, but if you wanted to do a deeper dive uh, on the reasons why these numbers are what they are, uh, that gives you the, the detail. Again, most of the projections are based on a two-year analysis plus, um, an inflation factor. Could you scroll back up to, uh, the revenues, please? You'll see property taxes here, uh, uh, were 41,143,389 last year on a pre-close basis. Um, and our 43,272, 474 projected. The increase in the variance you see is about a 2.129 million dollars. And then you'll see on the total revenue sign, uh, the, the variance is 2.35 million dollars or 2.35 million dollars is projected to be an increase over our total revenue from last year for, uh, a revenue of 48.9 million dollars. Our expenditures. You'll note faculty salaries permanent at about a hundred and, a $728,000 increase, uh, largely due to that 8% salary increase. The faculty salaries temporary, that's the area I made a correction on that I referenced at the beginning of our presentation. We transposed a few numbers there and it showed a lower cost for our part-time faculty members. So I've made that correction. Our faculty numbers are part-time are projected to be. Our faculty numbers are part-time are projected to be point four point three million dollars. And then you'll see our our academic permanent, et cetera. The variance at the very bottom had an confidential permanent. You'll see the variance is about seven hundred thirteen thousand dollars. That's that's due to three different reasons. Number one, it includes a three and a half percent increase to that staff, that staff complement. It also includes some realignment of responsibilities and promotions related to the reorganization that occurred at the beginning of July first. And it also includes includes some open positions that were unfunded, that that were unfilled, I'm sorry. So you can see the total salaries increased by two point three six seven million dollars to twenty seven, nine, two, nine in this budget. Our employee benefits. You can see our total employee benefits only went up by three hundred seventy two thousand dollars, or around three percent. You would expect them to go up more, but remember, CERF one and two has decreased the demand for payroll-related benefits. Scroll down, please. Total books and supplies, ninety seven hundred dollar decrease, largely in other supplies. It looks like we went to a two-year average and we may have pulled something out of there, it looks like, for two eighty nine as opposed to three thirty three, our pre-close. I don't quite understand why we went down there, but I'll have to take another look at that. Under other operating expenses, you look at the top line where it says other professional services. You'll see an increase, a variance of one point one eight two million dollars. There are a couple of biggies in there. The biggest one in there is the managed services contract for for our IT area. In addition, there there is the consultant for the Ashland bill. And there's also funding for the educational master plan that sits in there. By the by, we did see a slight decrease in our personnel costs related to IT because we didn't fill those positions in anticipation of going to a managed solution. So our total other operating costs, supplies, increased by one point one nine eight million dollars. Our total budget is seven point two eight five million dollars. Our capital outlay is at a hundred and thirty three, the variance to one point two three three million dollars. Our other outgo and our transfers, we did some transfers to address the insurance costs related to our cybersecurity issue or what wasn't covered by cybersecurity. We also wrote down some longstanding food service losses that gas was experienced. So you may or may not know that our food services have not made any money. In fact, they've they've cost the DAS and essentially the institution money because they don't quite have the demand. And that was exacerbated by the pandemic. So we picked this year to write that down, so it's it's effectively the liability that we've addressed. Have we not written it down? There was an accumulation of, I think, seven or eight years. So I don't know what, maybe they're making money before that, or maybe they just wrote it down over several years. Our OPEB, you can see is increased by two hundred eighty three thousand dollars. Our OPEB are the costs of post-employed employees who are entitled to medical benefits post-retirement at a value of around one point, just under one point three million dollars. And then the cost of two annuities for CERF one and CERF two. And then our other outgo are some some transfers for total expenditures of forty eight million, five seventy two, four sixty one, as compared to our pre-pre-close of forty four, seven ninety nine. If you can scroll down a little bit more, there we go. So the, where do we sit in terms of reserves? Remember, that was a priority. Our fund balance has an amount of total expenditures, which is missing right there. We projected last year we would add it about ten point three percent. I'm reporting here at thirteen point eight two percent, but I think it's going to inch up a little bit. And then on Tuesday, I indicated that we would be a little higher, like thirteen point eight, thirteen point nine percent. But I needed to make that adjustment primarily in the part-time faculty salaries. So that brought down that contribution to around three six, three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars for thirteen point four nine percent with a fun fun balance as a percentage of expenditures. So our any fund balance will jump up to six and a half plus million dollars if the if the budget performs as we intended to be. And fingers crossed, we could see even more promising results as well. Fund Fund Eleven is the one most most folks are interested in because it impacts our our operations, our salaries, our benefits. Before I move on to the other twenty four funds, what questions and observations might you have about Fund Eleven? Hearing none. Let's move on to Fund Twelve. President Dodd referenced Fund Twelve. I just want to be careful that our pre-close numbers have not been reconciled yet. So when they are reconciled, I think that will be a truer, a truer indication of what activities there are. Again, the takeaways are that there are areas that we're understanding in and that we we need to look to our programs and see what plans are in place and how we can how we can best utilize those funds. We do have good balances there. Total Fund Twelve, we were receiving almost nineteen million last year in in total Fund Twelve revenues in in all those programs. So it's a fairly robust area. You scroll down, please. It's Fund Twelve. And again, if you want to take a deeper dive, look at the assumptions at the bottom of each of these schedules. Yes, let's go to these assumptions. Restricted funds revenues generally generally recognized to the extent of qualifying expenditures. We referenced that earlier. At this printing, the district is still performing its year-end closing work, as I mentioned. And total revenues with approximate total expenditures will be reconciled, and there will be no significant change to the fund balance. The increase currently shown in fund balance from twenty two, twenty three will be re-classed because of third revenues because we haven't earned them yet. It's also noted here that her funds concluded in twenty two, twenty three. So there are a couple of areas where you see no her funds and they're they've been spent appropriately. Her funds can also be used in Fund Eleven to recover lost revenue. So you'll see a decrease in one of the revenue lines because we couldn't use her funds. They're not available to us anymore. Then her funds in Fund Twelve are largely for for technology improvements to improve distance act.
Okay. Quick question about the Fund Twelve. One of the things we talked about and you reiterated it here is that the a lot of the money, if we don't use it, we'll lose it. And but I I have a follow-up kind of question to that. If we if we basically go to the end of a fiscal year and leave money on the table that does that we don't use and we have to give it back, does that have any impact on our future applications? Or it is like it, you go, we go asking for money and they say, well, we gave you money last time, you didn't use it.
It can. Many, many categoricals and some federal funds have what they call a rollover feature. So you can, if you don't use all the money in one year, you can roll it over. When you come to the end of the grant, however, you have to usually file for an extension. And to your point, if future applications, they want to see how you've used the money. And most importantly, are you getting the outcomes that you said you were getting? You you were going to achieve with the utilization of these funds. So you're right, it could impact future funding.
If I could jump in, Trustee Baker, we have every intention of spending our Fund Twelves. Yes.
I think there are checks being written this very moment. Any questions, further questions? We'll have more information as we fully reconcile this. Any questions on Fund Twelve? All right, thank you. Moving along. These are our general obligation bond activity. General obligation bonds are commitments by the district and ostensibly by the county to repay funds that were generated by bond sales for largely for facilities here. These these revenues and expenses don't hit our operating budget. But what the county does is take them off the top before they send us, send us our revenue. So as part of our audit and our annual financial reporting, we're required to report the activity. There there's not much to report here. We paid, the county paid our bills for us and we met our obligations for our general obligation bonds. We move down to the next schedule, please. Our childcare fund, we have a preschool on campus, early childhood education program. This is no longer a college program, but a program operated by the county Education Office. We are a pass-through or a fiscal agent, which means that the funding is given to the college who passes it along to the county to support that that preschool, early childhood ed programs. And we keep an administrative fee as the fiscal agent. And so that's what you're seeing in the ending fund balance of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Does that money show up in Fund Eleven?
No.
This stage here?
It's it sits there. You can use it. You have fairly wide ability to use it. I'd recommend that that we we look to, you know, putting a new roof on the childcare center is the kind of uses that we probably should focus on. Otherwise, it'll be pulling out of resources that are that we should be using for the campus. Next schedule, please. This is the Capital Outlay Projects Fund. This is Fund Forty One. This is, this is where where when we receive scheduled maintenance funds for the facilities, we we planted here. One of the challenges we've seen is that the state is clawing back a good, good portion of of our scheduled maintenance funds. So you'll see some reductions in those. I want to share with you that these are highly inflated, inflated for a good reason because this is where that thirty one million dollars landed when we received it from the from the state of California. You'll also see that it all went out and it all went out to the project fund. So you'll see in our notes that we moved sixteen million of it in in March or April and then the remainder of it in early July. So you'll see some large activity there, but it is a, it was an in and out to support the the program. We do have a balance here of three hundred one thousand dollars. I think the part we need to focus here on is building this balance so that we can be prepared to address any demands that might be placed on the budget for that subordinated liability related to the student housing project, which is could be up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That doesn't say it'll cost us six fifty, but we need a place to go in the event that some, that that there's a call on some portion of that. We have every confidence that the program will perform, but we need to have a place to go if it doesn't to up to that amount. Next schedule, please. This is our self-insurance fund.
I'm so, I'm so sorry to interrupt, just getting back to that. I mean, what are ways outside of, I mean, outside of getting amazing state grants to to build up that that fund, to do projects exactly like like that?
To build that fund?
Yeah.
Transfers from Fund Eleven, when you, when you're reaching a threshold in your reserves that you like, is one place to do it. Contributions to, any contributions that say I'd like to support that?
Okay. Thank you.
I I will share with you that that when the project pro forma is scheduled to generate revenues to the institution
housing.
fairly quickly. So one of the decisions the board might make is we want to see this at at a particular level to make sure that we, you know, we have appropriate dollars there. It it increases fairly quickly. And I say, when I say fairly quickly, it gets into seven figures a few years down the road. So it can be, we need to consider that in a wider context. But that that may be a decision the board would want to, thank you, consider. Self-insurance, again, was, we moved a hundred thousand dollars here just to be prepared for any additional demands, deductibles, mostly related to the cyber attack. Next schedule, please. Internal Services Fund, you may recall, last year we we moved to a Fund Sixty Eight so we can have a place for some discreet reflection of financials for for services that we wanted to measure specifically. In this case, our print shop. We wanted to be able to say, what's the cost is for our print shop? What's generating in revenue? And and we can go to this quickly and see what that's, what we're doing there. Print shops occur on some campuses and don't occur on others. They can be high cost. I've asked our director, our DAS director, to put together a business plan that helps us understand when we can, number one, break even and number two, when we can make a contribution to our unrestricted general fund. So this is a way, what it's showing is we've taken our expenses out of Fund Eleven and we've reflected them here so that we can see what kind of revenue and expenses are here. So there is a budget of one fifty three, four oh one. Here, you'll notice mostly in terms of salaries for that position, for that area. And we anticipate some revenues or some recognition of revenues moving forward. Next schedule, please. This is our post-retirement benefits fund, Fund Sixty Nine. This, this is in addition to the budgeted transfer from unrestricted general fund, which is used to fund the cost of district's retiree benefits. This is the CERF fund to help with the district's twenty two, twenty three cash flow and avoid costs of issuing tax revenue bonds. So what we did last year was we were looking at the possibility of a cash flow crunch. So what we did was, based on an earlier, an older resolution of the board, we were able to move from that trust fund to the county to hold its cash. It was a good idea and we don't spend the cash, we just hold the cash, the county does. What that allows us to do is at least have the availability of cash to help us negotiate any cash flow shortages during the course of a year. This, that was a good time to do it because we were in a low interest environment. We weren't learning much. But I'll share with you, we're moving into a better interest environment now. We probably want to return that to the trust fund. And so that's, this is where it sits. The other part of our budget is always cash flow. So do we have enough cash to meet our obligations in time? Last year, the county was a little bit delayed in getting us our our cash. So we're always concerned, particularly in the fall of each year, about whether we have enough cash on hand. And we'll continue to provide you a cash flow report so that so that you're aware where we are. We are in good shape right now. We were in great shape last year because we were sitting on thirty one million dollars for a week or two and earning interest on that. So that's a, that's an error we'll probably want to take a look at and move those funds back to to the trust fund. Next schedule, please. Employees Retirement Benefit Trust is a CERF, this is, this is actually reflects the impact of the increase in the stock market at eight thirty since June thirty, twenty three. So we do have this trust for this retirement benefit trust fund out there to help us support future costs for retirement. Next schedule. Our Associated Student Body Fund is Fund Seventy One. This is essentially their annual operating budget. This is, these numbers anticipate the adoption of the Associated Student Body budget this year. So these will be revised when they, when they adopt their budget. So this is the the funds they collect for their operating budget and and it gives you a sense of what the kind of revenues they generate and their expenses. Next schedule. This is the, again, the Associated Student Body fee, just the second part of it. See their ending fund balance in, at the pre-close is a hundred and fifty seven thousand. And that will roll over into a new budget year. Next schedule, please. This is the Student Representation Fee Trust Fund. These are funds collected to support students in their activities, to represent student interests at public bodies, including state senates, boards of trustees and and other agencies to represent the interests of students. It has a balance of about thirty four thousand dollars, I think. So that's an opportunity. So that's an opportunity uh. To fund uh that kind of travel and that kind of advocacy on behalf of students. Next schedule, please. Student Financial Aid Fund, this is essentially an in and out. Mostly federal income. Students qualify for federal income. It's received by the college and awarded to students. So it's essentially a pass through. With um with the college maintaining some small portion as an administrative fee. So you can see uh. Revenues uh anticipated about five point eight million dollars and and then you'll see um. Essentially the money going out and a fund balance of about fifty thousand dollars. And I think that concludes our schedules. What questions might you have?
You said it's not just one question?
I already asked him on Tuesday.
Now, fair enough. Well, trustee Baker is speaking of that. Do you want to report anything out from audit and finance?
No, I did. This is um, believe it or not, this was the Reader's Digest version. We got the longer version mostly because I kept interrupting. But uh we we uh went over the entire thing uh um on Tuesday and uh had a. Motion that passed that we would recommend the adoption of the uh budget to the full board. Uh so unless anybody has questions for me or uh uh Mr. Reeves, I think we are good to do that.
See, I'm saying, um Catherine, can we take any uh or do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll close public comments and. I would welcome a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, trustee Olson. And trustee Rios for your second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Accusals? Uh budget is approved unanimously. Thank you so much, Jim, and and thank you to the entire uh. Business office team or budget committee. I know. Yeah, a lot of work.
Thank you.
Mitch, uh thank you so much for that. And I think again, to reemphasize, I think the point that we made last year is just that we really appreciate the tremendous amount of transparency. Too, and the time spent on it. I'm just trying to think like my first two years on the budget. It was always like a. I don't know, it's like a five minute conversation or not even a conversation, but it was very succinct. And so just to be able to go to. Level of detail that that you guys have gone in is is incredibly helpful. So thanks again. Uh we will go to, oh. Man, you're still on. I feel like we should have like worked on some sort of.
As if you were tired of looking at numbers.
Uh Fund eleven update.
Thank you, President Dodd. Uh I won't spend a lot of time here uh because this still reflects our tentative budget. Because uh when I pushed this out, you hadn't approved the final budget. What it does show um as I as I looked at uh these numbers last night. That our revenue will include will improve slightly at fiscal year end twenty-two, twenty-three. And our expenditures are being adjusted based on those adjustments and those appropriate transfers from back and forth from Fund twelve. So I think we had uh a a really good budget year in twenty-two, twenty-three. If you want to scroll down. Thank you to the reserve numbers. Again, I didn't put the reserve numbers in here. Because uh I I think they're going to show a little bit better than I did in the budget, but I uh. In deference to trustee Olson or trustee Baker, I'm not going to throw those out there yet, but I think we're looking at a slightly better. Projection in terms of reserves last year, which will increase our fund balance moving into to the current year. So um not a lot to report here that you haven't seen, but you will see the new budget posted here uh with uh moving back to that um. Percentage of the budget year and and the variance report for our next report.
Great. Any questions? Certainly not. We will go to uh constituency reports for. Uh women to associate students. Do we have anything from uh President Sharma?
Uh no, Priya's not here. I have Danielle Alexander and. Oh, I think Jisanya just joined. I'm not sure. Where did she go?
Great. Danielle, we'll have uh you first and then uh Jisanya. Next.
Oops, wait, someone's raising hands at me. Hey, Danielle, I'm trying to promote you. Yeah, come on in.
And Danielle, for that, we can't hear you at all.
Oh, here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great, great. I I just got let in, so I just wanted to um. Pop on. I'm at home tonight, but I wanted to just check in and let you know that I actually do not have a report, but it felt. Like very rude to not at least say hello. And also to congratulate our new tenured faculty and Dr. Powell. And um just, I just didn't want to be rude since this place is held for me. The things that uh we were that I reported on last month, we're still working on. So hopefully next month they'll have a new. Update, but thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Danielle. The last thing, the last word, whatever adjective I would ever describe Danielle is is rude. So for for the record, thank you so much, Danielle. It's good to hear your voice.
And I'd just like to say hi, Danielle, back.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Be very rude, yeah. Have a good night, Danielle. And uh Jisanya?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, um I. Sorry about that. My um computer glitched a little bit. I my screen just shook. Um yeah, hi, good evening. I just wanted to um. I have a few things to say today. Um so thank you for the time. Um I want to begin with recognizing uh the separation of our colleagues. This evening, Ian Holbrook and Antoine Williams. And we just want to extend and wish them well in their future endeavors, inclusive of good health, growth and success. This evening, I also wanted to welcome Katie Mills, um that is on the docs, uh research analyst that will begin this month. The Union of Classified Professionals uh are planning a classified social titled New Beginnings. This social is. Will take place on campus on September twenty eighth. We have found ourselves as a unit uh in a position where change and reprioritization is necessary. So we look forward to gathering in a safe space and uh be able to socialize. Um I also, moving forward, okay, so on August twenty-first uh twenty twenty-three, the Office of Human Resources Training and Development. Sent out an official email announcement of the agreement on a pilot telecommute program. That will be effective September first through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, so September first of this year, twenty twenty-three. Through next year, June thirtieth. Um I would like to echo that the district recognizes the benefits for both the district and classified professionals. At this time, um I'd like to express our gratitude and look forward to continuing to work with the district on a pilot process. We deem it necessary to spotlight the fact that there are many classified professionals that do not qualify for the pilot telecommute program at this time. We, however, anticipate a successful pilot that may pave the way for potential permanent telecommuting opportunities for positions that are eligible. We foresee that this will positively impact recruitment, but most importantly, retention of qualified professionals. Uh thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Is Christine Tapia here?
Uh no, she's at a conference.
Okay, I hope she's having fun. She is uh.
No, Dr. Cronzer.
Is not here, but I see one person that's here. Christie, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Board, and congratulations to our tenured faculty. Congratulations to Dr. Powell. My my colleague, Matt Cronzer, is not here for probably the best of reasons. He and his wife had a baby. So he uh he's actually taken this week off so he can, you know, not sleep, I guess, but. And uh he will be back next week. Um I don't have a whole lot to report. This is the last year of our contract, so we are looking forward to working on that all this year. And so we'll be in negotiations um regularly to get the ball rolling on that. But of course, we have to first settle the re opener from this year. So once we get that uh taken care of, then we will start working on the uh the twenty-four to twenty-seven contract. We had our first General Faculty Association meeting today. Where we uh showed the uh faculty our our salary proposal for the re opener. And we talked about a little bit of contract language. It was spirited and um. And so we will be bringing out some changes to our next negotiation session. Other than that, I I. Look forward to seeing our negotiators on September twenty eighth. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christie, and thank you again for being here. President and Cabinet reports.
Catherine, if we could open the OA Board Report first, that would be great. Thank you so much. So um as VP Reeves uh mentioned in the budget, we are very much on track to be either flat or slightly up in our FTS this year. So you can see as of uh the thirteenth of September where we are, um it's almost the same as last year in terms of our FTS. Our enrollments are higher, um and our headcount is just slightly up. You can see four thousand five hundred and sixty-seven credit students. So far this fall compared to four thousand five hundred and twenty in fall of last year. We do have a number of late start classes. Um some of them don't begin until October. So uh there will be some fluctuation and change. Uh many of them are full, but we do still have some that are open. What we do see also in terms of um at the division level and changes. Is that there are two divisions, Arts and Humanities and Career Education and Workforce Development. That have seen significant increases in FTS. And um we believe that is largely because these uh two areas are very much impacted by the availability of in-person. Hands-on active learning. And so being able to have more in-person classes has particularly benefited um those. Last time, you may recall that in the August report to the board, our non-credit enrollments were um down actually from fall the prior year as of that date. That has changed, so they are comparable, slightly up. Um it's still a small number, but we have four hundred and twenty-four enrollments. In fall twenty twenty-three compared to four oh nine at this same time last fall, so an improvement of about three point six seven percent. And just as with our credit programs, we do have some late starts that are available. So we'll we'll see some fluctuations over the course of the semester. The other main thing I wanted to report on is um what we are doing with our educational master plan. So we have established our steering team, and it's possible we may have one or two more members that get added, but these are the commitments so far. So I am acting as the project lead. Um Dr. Cronzer, the academic senate president, serves as one of the faculty representatives. And then Amanda Badgett, who is the faculty co-chair of the planning committee, serves as the second faculty representative. From the administrative group, we have Robin Warnall, who um is also representing research, planning and institutional effectiveness. And Christine Tapia from the Administrative Senate. And we heard from Danielle a little bit ago. She is serving for the Classified Senate. And we have the ASNVC Vice President, Carrie Six, who is serving as the student representative. And we welcome more students if if they decide they would like to join us. The steering team is the guiding body who helps oversee the project. But of course, there will be many, many opportunities for input from many people. We are planning an employee survey and a student survey uh launching in October. We'll have focus groups and forums, and we plan to incentivize student engagement. We've been um in discussion with the foundation. To provide gift cards so that students who might not be able to make it to a focus group, for example. Will have some incentive to participate, and that will be a very positive thing. We'd like to get as many students as possible. And if we could go to the um second attachment, which is the EMP kickoff. This gives an overview of um both our objectives and the timing of our planning. So you can see that our focus is to produce an actionable equity-focused and data-driven EMP. We want to make sure that we are aligning with our college priorities and initiatives. Our third objective is to ensure that we have lots of engagement, lots of input and ownership from both our internal and external partners. And of course, the goal is that we will have a five-year plan at the end of this um project. So you can see for the areas of work and our planned timing. The EMP steering team, that is the group I just uh talked about a moment ago, is meeting bi-weekly. Um I also meet with the the um West Ed team regularly, and as an example, Dr. Warnall and I met with them. This morning talking about data collection. We are doing the quantitative data analysis that has already begun uh starting in late August, and that will continue through November. We will have focus groups, both faculty and student, um in the months of October and November. And campus and community input sessions uh beginning October second through November seventeenth. Our plan is to have a draft of the quantitative data analysis complete for January. And um to have a flex session for input from the community, all all stakeholders in January. And then um a completed draft, which means. That will go out to all of the groups, the governance groups for additional layers of feedback. So the draft EMP will be going out in March and April, and we anticipate bringing that to the board in May of twenty twenty-four. So this is really exciting to begin this work. Um the EMP, of course, provides. A roadmap for our future directions for the next five years and also helps us to see um how our other plans are connected. Provides some direction for working on those plans. Um and one one thing that is different in our version of the EMP is that we are integrating our strategic directions and goals as a part of it. So we'll see updates from those that you um saw in the budget proposal earlier. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, but it but it's a great start so far.
In in terms of the external partners, I wasn't here last week. I did watch uh watch me, but would want to hear just like a little bit more information in terms of uh. That kind of process and bringing in like members of the chamber or, you know, local or or growers of, you know, now value grape growers and those of the farm bureau. And bringing in those. How exactly does that work in in terms of that outreach process and and that uh opportunity for input? Like, what does that look like?
Yeah, so we'll be working with the President's Office and with the foundation as well as with, uh we have a lot of uh. Members of our team who also work with other partners. So we're going to get a list of all of the folks that we should invite and have at least one or two sessions for. External um stakeholders as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. I think we're on to uh to me. Um good evening, um Board and uh Community. Also, I'd like to congratulate um our our tenured faculty members um and Dr. Powell. So uh this evening, I'm gonna share with you uh some things that Student Affairs has been up to over this past month. Uh we go to our first slide. So we start off the semester with a um a pretty intense and 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 deep and and um. Very passionate uh Student Affairs Council Retreat led by Dr. Orlando Carrion, Corina Huie. Who um really came in and focused um community building, collaboration and goal setting. It was an opportunity for us to really come together as Student Affairs Department. And um really, we were asked this question, you know, if if what if we can do anything we wanted to in Student Affairs with no kind of barriers? What would that look like? So it gave us the opportunity to really dream about what's possible um in Student Affairs and the impacts that we want to make through Student Affairs. So we are working on developing. Taking that information, put it together and developing a plan, a plan of action around what we're going to do in Student Affairs really for the next um upcoming year, but hopefully for much longer than that. So if you scroll to the next slide. Here are some pictures from that um interaction. Again, we we got an opportunity. Again, we we got an opportunity to do a deep dive on really the the what we envision our Student Affairs Departments to look like and the impacts we want to make across the community. So it was powerful, powerful opportunity to build together. Next slide. So last week, September fifth through the seventh, we celebrated Spirit Week, which was basically three days of activities from Club Rush to Transfer Day, to really an opportunity to to engage the community, engage our local schools around really what Napa Valley College has to offer around their clubs, but also really supporting transfer. Thirty universities attended our our Transfer Day. We had over four hundred and fifty high school students come. Napa Valley College was able to support buses for all of our local high schools, all the way up to Cal Stoga, American Canyon. And we brought students directly to Napa Valley College. It was a pretty powerful event to just walk across campus during, it was his last Thursday, and see the amount of students that were on campus engaging with each other, engaging with our university reps and our college representatives as well. So if you scroll to the next slide, which is some pictures of the activities that were that happened. I was also, I want to just, I want to thank everybody in the Napa Valley College community because we needed some help setting up our canopies, and we put a call out for college staff to come together. And about eight fifteen in the morning, eight thirty, about ten, fifteen staff showed up, volunteered, helped us, helped us to put up the canopies. We got things set up. It was really a community effort. It was powerful community building activities. So I want to thank everybody who supported that. Last Friday, I facilitated along with the Student Affairs Deans. The all Student Affairs staff moved in that meeting. We really discussed the the reorganization in Student Affairs and the impacts that's had across all of our areas. And I offered an opportunity for Student Affairs staff to ask questions around the different departments, how things are being facilitated, discuss important program updates for all of our areas in Student Affairs. But more than anything, and a big push, and I've said this from the first day I began this position, is it was really around building community in Student Affairs. So coming together as a team, connecting, and and just seeing each other. Some folks have seen each other. I had a picture from that activity. They've emailed each other. They've talked on the phone, zoomed like crazy, but never actually spoken to another person. So it's pretty powerful to just connect and and see each other at the Student Affairs All Staff Meeting. And then the last one, with just a couple of upcoming events that we have. We are in the process of of planning our high school visits. So this is basically myself, Student Affairs Deans. We'll go off to the high schools and visit with the local administrators and counselors, really to set up opportunities to to learn our schools, what needs to happen, what more do we need to do, and also to connect and build. So that is happening. We're going to visit nine local schools all the way again, up and down the valley. And we will have our manager for enrollment, Christine Tapia, also participating in that. And I believe Dr. Powell has been invited to some of those as well. So if, yeah, I think he's going to try to attend some of those activities. He's at our high school practice, save the date for the number nine that is coming up. And I hope we will have a pretty good agenda, let's see what kind of what's going to be happening at that activity or next board meeting. I also wasn't able to put this onto my PowerPoint, but I do want to share that next week, we will have poets Jose Onuades through the Puente Organization Program on campus doing a reading. So please, if you are on campus next Wednesday, September twentieth, six thirty, there's a six o'clock reception. He's a well-known poet. You're gonna know poet. Please come. It supports our activity. We'll be at the Little Theater. So you are all right to participate in that activity. Should be a good event. That concludes my report.
I just had one quick question. Is there much dialogue or discussions about the campus housing and what kind of impact that's gonna have on Student Affairs?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a discussion, actually, VP Reeves and I were just talking about earlier in the week. And we we are working towards, I know that our Omar Pena in student life, along with Dean D'Arcangelo are working, developing a plan that will really attend to that. So yes, we are working on putting together a robust plan to respond to our housing, what kind of student life will look like, as well as our student affairs. So that's that's in the process of happening now.
I'm curious, just kind of along the same same topic. I was noticing that the River Trail Village website is up now and people can apply. But there's no reference at all to student aid. It is so when you look at the what it costs to have a one-bedroom or something, it it does look like it's pretty exorbitant. But I think it would be, I don't know what kind of control we have over that website, but I think there should be some reference to the fact that that different aid options are available.
Excellent point. I think those are the things that we are addressing, Dr. Powell.
We actually had a conversation a few hours ago to that extent. The pricing itself does not reflect the the actual option for the select number of units that we will be able to market at significantly below market rate, the Affordable Index. So that's a conversation VP Reeves and I have had. We're actually drafting some communications to that effect and looking at the best ways for us to ensure that we spread the word that, you know, there are other options as well.
How are signups going for River Trail registration?
We have, as of yesterday, I think the managers meeting reported. What do they report?
Ten.
Ten.
Sixty to seventy.
Sixty inquiries.
Great.
So that the marketing effort will continue vigorously now. But Trustee Baker, it's, you're right on point. The sticker price is one issue. How can I pay for that? Is is the important component that we need to address, and there are lots of ways to pay for that, including ways being developed by through our foundation and other sources, and including the work that that President Dodd has done with the golf club recently will help help along those lines.
We we definitely are also, you know, it's part of our financial aid messaging and whatnot. That's that's part of our plan to make sure the community knows that financial aid will be available is is available. And we are really intentional about making sure the word gets out about how to do that and how to get the support that you need. So.
I'm not sure I can compete with Dr. Guerrero's graphics, so you can pull up my boring tones here. And I won't take much of your time here. I just wanted to give you an update on our audit. We are making good progress with our audit. Our Fund Twelve closing was hampered a bit by the loss of a very valuable staff member due to a resignation. But I think we will be able to meet our our timelines relative to completing that and finishing that. And I hope to give you kind of a harder date very soon about when that will happen. I'm not saying anything, or auditor isn't saying anything that would cause me or you any particular concern at this point. So I think it's going along. We just need to kind of hammer through the the process of closing, primarily Fund Twelve. I want to mention institutional technology. You may recall the momentous decision you made last month, last month to engage Lucian Managed Services onto the campus. I want to share with you that the day after that agreement was reached, they were on the phone, setting up meetings with with our cabinet, with our president, with our technology committee. They have now met with our management group. And I've met with them nearly every day. And we are seeing some immediate kind of infiltration of fresh ideas, new concepts, new approaches, and a growing, a growing confidence in in where we can go with these managed services. I will be asking them to make a report, an update to the cabinet soon, and I would like to schedule an update to the board about their activities and progress in the near future. But boots on the ground now. We have people kind of tucked away in some spaces over here, going at the good work that needs to be done there. So all good from certainly from an early perspective. Scroll down, please, Catherine. Just an update on our student housing project. I think we are making very good progress now. You'll see the scaffolding's coming down, the plaster is up, there are windows in, and it's looking like a place a student might want to live. It's it's coming along very nicely. I'm I'm constantly pushing on schedule. That's the critical piece for us today, making sure we're open and ready to to Dr. Guerrero's observations about having information in place about financial aid, student life, are all part of an implementations team's work that has been underway for several months now. So we are moving along. We have, I shared with Dr. Powell, the two areas I'm focused on today are is a marketing approach that spreads the word. We spent a little bit of this with Trustee Rios at the Wine Foundation yesterday. Is that yesterday? A couple of days ago? Seems like a week. And the other issue is answering the food service question for for a population who will be on our campus. The drive-throughs across the street are not the solution. So we need to be able to have an answer for that. So those are those are those are issues certainly in front of myself and others on campus. We are moving along. We're very excited, and and it looks very promising in terms of how we are there. Let me just spend a moment, lastly, on on the Ashland Bill. We have reached, we're, we have reached an agreement with the county about how we will approach an interim mitigation plan for the Ashland Bill. I think we're in good stead there, and we will begin the work to to provide the mitigation, the interim mitigation efforts that the county seems necessary, and that will allow us to open the building effectively safely from their perspective. Subsequent to that, we may be, we may need to engage in what will be called any permanent mitigation measures, which could look like two feet of soil or a piece of land out there. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. We're moving in and and we're making good progress. And we anticipate we'll we'll be in good shape there. With these kinds of issues, there's always always concern about how it's going to play out over time. And certainly, Dr. Powell and I have discussed that. I have not, as I mentioned to him, I have not pursued with council yet the responsibility for that land and and the cost we've incurred to mitigate those, mitigate those issues. But that's certainly on my and on my list of to-dos to engage council, begin that investigation. But that, I think, concludes my report. One more thing, I'm sorry. The Wine Education Center is, DSA is, we're in final comments there. And we are in the process of hiring a construction manager for that that project. And groundbreaking has not been announced by the foundation, but the groundbreaking is imminent for that Wine Education Center. That concludes my report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Napa Valley College community. This evening, I'm providing a report from Human Resources and Training and Development. As my colleague Kristi Iwamoto stated, we are in reopen our discussions at the table, and we too look forward to continuing the work for full bargaining for the contract for the new contract. With our classified professionals, we will be sunshining our bargaining interest in the upcoming months with the intent of engaging in full bargaining in the spring of twenty twenty-four. As my colleague Jacinia Cota stated, we did agree upon a pilot telecommuting program, and we have received interest. For more information, including an FAQ, you can go onto the HR website for additional resources. Open Enrollment, for those of you who need additional information, we are busy. We're gearing up for Open Enrollment, and we will have an Open Enrollment Fair. So please stop by, get some free goodies, most importantly, get information to make important decisions. We're also going to have a flu clinic on October the twelfth. Human Resources, we have been working diligently for the entire semester. I would think it started last semester, actually, with our Lucian consultants, looking at the resources that we've been provided and how we can improve upon our system. So that includes position control, that includes implementing, making improvements in how we capture our accruals for vacation sick leave. But one of the things that we're so excited about, because this is all done manually right now, is our leaves. And so we look forward very soon to be able to make an official announcement that we will be able to submit and get our leaves approved electronically, because this is all done by paper and one individual right now, all data entry. So this for us is exciting. I know some of you are looking at me going, really, Charles? That's what you're gonna report tonight? If you were the one doing the data entry for the entire campus, you will understand the significance of this. Training and development, we have been very, very busy. This semester, we started off by providing professional development days for our management group. We started with our management group because that's where a significant amount of change around the reorganization occurred. We started already with the focus of DEI. And the reason why we started that is because we're creating a foundational learning so that we can continue with our hard skills for our managers with an equity focus. And so we we've had two days, and we will continue with two more, and then move on to professional development as it pertains specifically to our roles as managers. We look forward to working with our classified professionals. We're developing four professional development days also for them. We look forward to creating a program, an Equity Ambassador program. And we also look forward to working with them to energize our efforts in supporting our classified professionals on the program-carrying campus. And so we just had a conversation today with the Classified Senate, and we look forward to partnering with them and professionally providing excellent resources around professional development. We have six employees that will be participating in a year-long program leading from the middle. This is an excellent program that is facilitated by the RP Group, and it's funded by our Chancellor's Office. And so we have gone through and actually identified leaders on our campus who not just show up, are always present and always wanting to do more for the college. And so we look forward to working with that group. They will be working on a project for the college. So looking forward to see what those outcomes will be. We have offered selection committee training. And for those of you who are not aware, selection committee training, the format has been changed, and we are focused on DEI equity and hiring with that lens. We will be offering the EEO training later in the September and moving on to recruitment. So recruitment has been fun as of late. I'm going to focus on the very last bullet there. We are currently piloting line application process. Let me explain. Normally, in our application process, you get the resume, the cover letter that has the person's name. You have information on even, you know, the dates when a person went to school. And when you get these things, you look at someone saying, like me, Charo Abaran. Now, I'm sure that at the time when I applied, you didn't know what you were getting. You had something in your mind until I walked through the door. You're going, that is not what I expected. Not at all, especially once I opened my mouth and started speaking. Well, line application, our selection committee, they actually get the application. They don't get the resume. They don't get the cover letter. We give our applicants specific instructions to put all of that information into our application. Our selection committee gets to see the application, no name, just an applicant number. And so we're piloting this process with our administrative confidential positions and our classified professional positions. And so far, just for the past couple of months of piloting this, I can tell you I am seeing a significant difference in the number of monitored groups reaching interviews than before we actually began using this. I don't have enough data, but I will be coming back March of next year with data to show you if this actually works. We decided not to pilot this with the faculty recruitment because faculty We decided not to pilot this with the faculty recruitments because faculty recruitments are different. We have equivalency. The need to see the the transcripts. And we currently, we do not have a way to automatically redact information. So that we're truly looking at education and experience. But once we piloted for the other two constituencies, I look forward to having conversations with the academic senate. On how we can implement this for our faculty recruitment. And that is my report this evening. And congratulations, Dr. Powell, and congratulations to our newly mentored tenured faculty. Thank you.
This would be the moment that I choose to have a coughing fit. My my formal report, written report, as usual, will be in the mail to you. Just a few things I want to highlight. First off, I want to start by. Extending a thank you to Board Chair Dodd for the Storm Cup, all the work that you've done on that on that regard. We last count that I heard we were up to almost fifty or over fifty thousand dollars on the total total haul there. So appreciate your work, your leadership on that as our students do. Also appreciate seeing trustee Rios and my good friend Kyle's golf game. You guys are a lot better than I thought you would be. It's not to say I didn't think you were good. It's to say that you're that good. Yes. Your game was 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 top notch. Also, one extended thanks to trustee Baker, Kishnef and Olson for attending the Evening at the Ruins with me. On Saturday night, that was a fun time, really fun time. Love that event. This, just yesterday, we had the chance to host NV USD and their their planning summit. So we had. A few hundred students, middle school and high school students here on campus, as well as some community members and parents. And it's a really innovative concept of involving engaging the students in the future planning for the next five years or so. Of their, you know, how they're going to engage students and do teaching and learning. So it was really, really great to to see that in action and and we're glad that. They chose the NV US or NBC rather to to house that event. Also, looking forward to doing some work with trustee Olson on the Black History Month Committee. As we move into next year, working in collaboration with some of our community partners. Thank you for that invitation to to serve and be involved with that group. I'm really excited about our work there. And the last thing, just want to highlight some of the articles you've seen recently. NBC in the paper, one of which was for the new CCAP agreement that we have with New Tech High School. They were actually recipients of state funding to expand some of those pathway programs, the middle college programs. So. This is a really, really great event or a great partnership, something that we want to extend out to. All of the high schools where where possible within our service area. Because as we know, the the sooner we can get students taking college classes, the better their chances of completion, better their likelihood of actually attending college. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Cabinet. Thank you, Dr. Powell. Committee reports, I believe the only one that we have tonight is from Viticulture and Winery Foundation.
Okay, so yeah, we we did meet yesterday, even though. Even though, yes, Mr. Reeves might be, you know, a little lost there on our timing. But it actually does feel like it was longer ago. But there were a few things that I think were are worth highlighting. One of them being that Dean Marriott reported about how we now have a wine. And food pathway. That before it was difficult for students to do that because of the. Classes for each side of this were spread out throughout different parts of the programs. And now it'll be easier for them to to take all of those classes in this pathway. He also reported that our our wine club is sold out. And the final delivery of the last. Shipment just happened because Kyle got his wine finally. And we're kind of holding up the whole show. It's been taken care of. The Malley reported that the vineyard replant is going well. Things are going well out there. We reviewed. Financials, I think we're running a little bit at a deficit. At this time, so if you do have the opportunity to buy some wine, you know, you you should. It's it's good. I've actually had, well, I've had my wine for. Probably over a month now. So I have taken that out and had had the cab and. The other wines with people when I go out to either with family or friends introducing people to to the wine. And some of them were, I guess they thought, you know, it's student-made wine, but they were surprised that. That's the quality because you tell them, you know, the students made it and they go, oh. But they tasted and then they're pleasantly surprised. So that's been great. The one thing that Mr. Reeves touched on, didn't talk about. The opportunity that the housing. Project is going to present for trying to market. The program, not only locally, but by the United States, out of the country internationally. And what might be able to be done and help us recruit people for, you know, students for for the program. Once we've got the housing, which will make it much easier. So we had a great discussion about. Such ways to recruit. You know, agencies, organizations to look out to, to let them know about this upcoming opportunity. So that was, I think, one of the the great things that happened at our meetings. Another thing that Molly reported, I think, was great was because we didn't have the vineyard, you know, it had been ripped out and just. Replanted, they couldn't do some of their their work in vineyards. So she. So how the industry members who were bringing stuff to let the classes come out to vineyards. And I think that's a great experience for them. And as she mentioned, a great connection to the industry. Seeing students out there and seeing what's what they're learning about and how they're doing. So I thought that was another great thing that's going on at the moment. The other stuff is kind of administrative and and not not really exciting. So. Did I miss anything, any other exciting part that you remember, Jim?
I I couldn't remember. It was yesterday, let alone what we talked about, but I think you caught the exciting parts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Rios. We will move to future agenda item requests.
I had trustee Iverson, one, I was thinking. Everything that Senator Dodd has done for the college and that district that. We maybe look at doing something in terms of, we've talked about naming rights, but. The welding program and finding some additional funding for that. Housing, so I'd like to see that discussed.
Senator Dodd, Senator, I said Senator Dodd. He was very clear, trust me.
I would I would be in favor of that.
Thank you, trustee Iverson. And yeah, whether or not, I'm just trying to think of that as an agenda item or. Right, how to, but yeah, I think that's. Obviously, I'm supporting, yeah, I'm supportive of that. I could not refuse that. What's that? Yeah, yeah, just a little bit. And cool, that's a really nice thing to offer Kyle. And any other future agenda item request? Yeah, okay, then we will move on to trustee reports. I will, now, I'll do you last, I'll do you last, trustee Iverson, can I start off with you, please?
Short short report, but I tended the storm cup. That was really fun. I think that was a success. I thought my team was doing well, shooting eight under par, but. Think there were some stacked teams and I think the overall winning score was a twelve or thirteen under par, which is. Pretty impressive. So it was fun. Something, I think. There may, there may have been some PGA level players out there. Yeah, so it was good, though.
Trustee Olson.
Yes, I did enjoy the Evening at the Ruins with the team. Dr. Moore was there as well. We had fun. I think we were our bidding table let us pick the second to the last dessert in the dessert dash. Maybe the third to the last, and we got a delicious berry pie despite the fact that we were almost last. So it was really fun.
Very cool. Trustee Olson, or excuse me, trustee Baker.
Okay, so you have to indulge me because it's that time of year again. First week of October is banned books week. I'm going to read a quick quote and then just a couple of interesting stats. This is from Deborah Caldwell Stone. As the director of the American Library Association's Office for Intellectual Freedom. So this is a dangerous time for readers and the public servants who provide access to reading materials. Readers, particularly students, are losing access to critical information and librarians and teachers are under attack for doing their jobs. Bad Books Week celebrates the freedom to read and spotlights current and historical attempts to censor books in libraries and in schools. And just to very quickly kind of discuss a little bit about what's been happening. In a time of intense political polarization, library staff in every state are facing an unprecedented number of attempts to ban books. And what I mean by unprecedented is the number of books that have been challenged in the last two years has. Increased by over eleven hundred percent. So in the of the record, two hundred and two, two thousand five hundred and seventy-one unique titles targeted for censorship. Most were by or about LGBTQIA plus persons and Black, Indigenous, and people of color. The theme for Band Books Week two thousand twenty-three is Let Freedom Read. When we ban books, we're closing off readers to people, places, and perspectives. But when we stand up for stories and unleash the power that lies inside every book. We liberate the array of voices that need to be heard and the scenes that need to be seen. Let Freedom Read.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Trustee Rios.
Well. Mine, a short report is also that I participated in the golf tournament and it was, it was a great time. I hope that we can. Continue that and certainly there are there are things for how quickly you put this together. And, you know, got everybody, everything arranged. It was great. And of course, then you see other things that we can do, you know, as we we continue to have it, hopefully. And I I didn't see, really see Kyle's golf game, so I I appreciate that you said that mine was better, Dr. Powell. But I'm sure next year he'll he'll be more competitive. That that is all. Thank you.
Trustee Kishnef.
My report is short. I just wanted to extend a personal word of thanks to Janelle Selig and the people at American Canyon. Community and Parks Foundation for hosting the Evening at the Ruins. Which was a wonderful event. They are a credit to American Canyon and make our city better. So. Thank you to the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation and their volunteers.
Thank you very much, student trustee Alejandro Martinez.
Good evening. So it's actually like my first time having a report, so I cast some couples. So I had like one student trustee retreat. So I went like during the August. It was really great, great. I really learned a lot. But I remember like the first meeting I I went, they were like making people get up each table. And I think there was like more than three hundred like trustees people. So I was like nervous. I was like, oh, I'm. I'm a public speaker, you know, but I think I learned a little bit more. So I had to speak. I met a lot of great people. They taught me some new things. They taught me how to be a better leader in a way, or I also network with them. So I have their info, their emails. So I learned a lot. So if anything, have a questions, I can always ask them. It was a great experience. And I also have a report about, as a new student worker, I work as a dream center. So there's going to be an upcoming event undocumented student action week, October sixteen through twentieth. If you guys, we don't know the time officially, but we do have some couple speakers going to come. Like, we're going to be working on that, but I'll probably listen, I'll probably send some email, email stuff. So if you guys want to come in during those days and stuff like that, like just important will be great. And I also have a very interesting to see. So we're doing this couple of events for during the fall. So we're doing this zombie run. I don't know. The one who's doing this is actually the events coordinator, the president. I know a little bit, but like they're doing the zombie runs. We want to do this event like people dressed as a zombie. So it's like a marathon. So people, you know, like. Be participating in it. So that'll be something new and exciting. And I know we're going to have this winter, winter formal dance before the finals. So it's kind of, so it's for the students who didn't. Didn't like participate during the twenty, because I didn't know what happened to the pandemic. So we're going to do this type of dance in Napa College. It's called the informal. Doctories are walking to come. And students have fun. And that includes faculty to students. Basically, if you bring, so we're trying to like, we're trying to test that out. We're trying to test, we're trying to test the water out. So we're trying to like just bring a formal tube. We're going to see how it goes with the winter formal score. Our best is to bring like as much people we can. And see how it goes. And that is also really important too, because we're trying to do as a fundraising for the DC. Because I know like Washington DC trips can be expensive. So we're kind of like trying to see if it's going to work or we'll see what happens. But that includes my report.
Thank you very much. And and thank you for everybody's help and support. Trustee Rios and trustee Iverson, really, you guys ran from day one. So I really appreciate that that support. And I mean, just everybody. There's so many people. And the foundation provided a lot of support. Jessica Thomas and Emily Booth did a lot of, helped out a credible amount. And we just had so many great sponsors and. It was just really kind of nice to see everybody come together. And what's great about it, I think, is there is like, trustee Rios, what you're saying, there is a lot of room, a lot of room for, I think, improvement. And greater opportunities with more time after this, this just being kind of a first year event. And yeah, so it it we will definitely do it again next year. I think it'll be a lot easier to, just because once you have an example to go off of and a lot of, and and. The golf course where we did it at and and Jenny, trustee Olson's husband was very involved too and helping us get this great, and have like play the golf at Napa Valley Country Club too. And also to that, she she donated her son to actually fill in the slot. Jim Reeves, who unfortunately was was going to play but couldn't, had to drop out, but I also had your son Blake join. He was incredible, a gentleman too. And trustee, Dr. Powell, thank you also for being there. So yeah, it's fun. And I definitely, hopefully, you know, we'll we'll have a fun, I think, a party too we had afterwards. And so everybody, even if you're not a golfer too, can feel being able to come along is a really good pizza. You like pizza, right? Yes, yes. So, but but thank you for those kind words. And yeah, very, very excited. And please do do thank Jessica and all the folks at the foundation too. If you you see them, I think they were really fired up and they worked really hard too. And then. I also, not going through my head is Athletic Director Jerry Dunlap was incredibly instrumental in in a a lot of it. So I certainly want to give a shout out to him and Warren Lee, who works with Jerry too. So with that, we will close it on out.
The funny part about Jerry Dunlap, who's actually a gym teacher in Bahai. Before he he moved in college.
That's right.
When I was, I'm like, oh, I knew you, like, that's where you left. He's like, yeah, I remember.
That's great. That's great. Yeah, no, people know, up and down. And thank you for that, trustee Alejandro Martinez. And our next meeting is October nineteenth. I might have a brand new baby girl right around that time, so which is kind of is awesome. So pending, who knows, but I I'm hoping I'll I'll be here. And and if there is nothing else, we will adjourn at seven forty PM.